Good evening. I'm calling to order this meeting of the East Lime Ad hoc Committee for Short Term Rentals. This is a regular meeting of February 25th, 2025. We have said the Pledge of Allegiance in our public hearing which preceded this meeting, so we will not repeat that. We do have public delegations. At this time, anyone from the public can speak. Does anyone wish to take the podium and speak at this time? Okay, saying not, we'll move on to item three on our agenda, which is approval of minutes of our last meeting, which was January 27th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Okay, Gary Frugia moved, and any seconding?
Greg will second.
Okay, any comments? Any changes needed? They were a good set of minutes. Thank you, Brooke. Okay. Seeing none, are all those in favor of approving those minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstain?
Have to abstain.
Abstain, okay. John was not there. Okay, fine. All set. Onto item four, which is the reports of co-chairs. I have nothing. This is the first time I ever write a report. I know, I'm always yapping. Do you have anything?
I was relying on the co-chair to make some comments, but keep my mouth shut.
All right, okay. I'll get it in otherwise, but, okay. So we're all set on item number four. So let's jump down to item five on the agenda, which is discussion of public comments received. We had our public hearing just prior to this. So, yeah, any initial thoughts, anything concerning, or think you want to take the report we did and start all over again?
No.
Okay. Yeah, anyone want to jump in?
So I think what we've heard is it was a microcosm of what we've heard at the other public hearings and during the course of all the meetings that we've had all year and a half long. We've had those discussions ourselves, and I don't think there's anything there that moved my decisions one way or the other.
Okay. All right. Paul, did you hear anything that you would like to comment about?
You know, I kind of agree with Greg. You know, this has been an ongoing conversation. There's been very limited angst against short-term rentals. There's been the comments about parking and noise, which we know are under ordinances that protect those things. And there's some issues that people believe still, I think, that most of the people in short-term rentals have no connection with the community. I still, from my own personal experience, as you know, I'm the short-term rental owner. That's far from the case. Most of the people we see have ties from the community and are coming back here. So, you know, I disagree with a lot of that comment. Certainly, there are some strangers that come and go, but for the most part, we find people are coming back to visit a friend, or go to a graduation, or a wedding, or, you know, come back to the town they grew up in. But I think people are looking for some type of registration opportunity. I think we heard that clearly tonight. I personally, again, will say that I don't believe this has risen to the level of having a permit. I don't know what that really does at the end of the day. But certainly, having owners and on the record of who they are, where they are, when they can be connected with in case there's a problem. You know, I plan on having mine inspected. I've been in contact with the fire marshals to do that, just so I can understand what they're looking for, what the process is. So we'll kind of follow up with that. They haven't been able to get there. I was hoping they'd get there before this meeting, so I can report on it. But again, I thought we heard what we heard, you know, throughout our time here doing this, and I thought that you did a nice job on the report, putting things together. There's a few things that I disagree with, most of the things I agree with, but, you know, I think it's time for us to present this to the Board of Selectment and see what their process is, you know. I think they'll probably have some time once they put the budget to the Board of Finance. So we should wait until that happens before we present to them, but, so, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. John, did you hear things tonight that changed your opinion, or emphasized certain points you want to, again, articulate, or?
I think that it shows, I think the conundrums are similar to what we've heard before, no question about it. You know, and, no, it has not changed, you know, my position, which I stated very simply, and I said in my last two meetings ago, you know, that the, I think that the, you know, the compromise situation, should be some compromise, you know, I feel, you know, we heard that tonight, we heard people who have problems with people next door, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that the, you know, my position is very, very simple, so some of these people supported that, some didn't. So obviously, any side of argument, you're going to have, you know, many different views. But, you know, it's, you know, I'm a firm believer that a minimum, minimum days of, you know, in an Airbnb, in a residential zone, you know, should be a requirement, like I say, my thing, it's been history, that weekly rentals in these type of areas, you know, is what's been going on in this country for many, many years. And the, you know, I feel that that's, you know, that's what should be a minimum, seven days. I don't think that we need, you know, any more, you know, restrictions, but I think that one, you know, is a major one, and people have lived in with rentals for a long time. And I don't believe that daily, you know, daily Airbnbs are appropriate in residential zones. We've got commercial zones, they can go in commercial zones. I firmly believe they are businesses, and it should be treated, you know, treated as such at that level. And I do believe it should be an ordinance, so that we don't deal with the, you know, pre-existing conditions that trumps it all, and everybody in all the beach communities have to abide by that. But, you know, again, you know, we're in Black Point, we have a seven-day minimum, and, you know, we would fall right, you know, fall, you know, right into that, and we have not had any exacerbated problems to date. But that's just my own, you know, and I think we've heard people on both sides, just so I don't think there's a clear view, you know, I really don't believe there's a clear view of all the meetings we had, and all the people we've spoken to, and the number of people I've spoken to, so, thank you.
Thank you. Gary, what did you think?
Well, five of the people who spoke were from my neighborhood, and two of them are short-term rental landlords, and two of them are living next to short-term rentals and having problems with it. And one is a landlord but rents to a family member. So that was pretty much across the board, what I've been hearing for two years in my neighborhood. And I think that what we've been trying to do here is thread the needle to respect everyone's right, a property owner's right to do what they want with their property, a resident's right to have a peaceful existence in the neighborhood of their choosing. And I think that our recommendations honor both of those requests. I do disagree with Paul about the permitting process. I think an ordinance mandating a permit is a key enforcement tool that authorizes a landlord to operate in this town, but also mandates that that landlord live by the restrictions that the zoning board will put in its regulations. And a permitting process also sets up for a resident who is aggrieved by the actions of a short-term rental near them, to petition the town and to give the town some enforcement properties to act on that. So I think what we heard tonight kind of confirms the approach that we have taken.
Okay. Gary?
So, to comment on what I heard tonight, I think was your question.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think it was same old, same old comments, but we had different people coming here, different perspectives, and I'm not going to simply write that off. People came up, they talked about their experiences, positive and negative, especially the people who told us that they were having problems with short-term rentals. Those residents were talking about what's important to East Lime community, and I believe that the community is what these folks were more concerned with, whereas what I heard short-term rental people, they were trying to, advocates, they were trying to fit in, one gentleman, to the positive impacts of cultural diversity, increased money for businesses and whatnot. You know, these are money positives. The cultural diversity, the studies that I've read shows that short-term rentals decrease diversity, that there are less, renters are less diverse. So his argument, I don't know if he had statistics or a particular study, he didn't cite it, but we have cited these things in our prior materials. So what I heard was, the community is important, short-term rentals are causing a problem for the community, and I back that up with what is the role of government in East Lime or any municipality. It's to make the lives of the people who live here better. And one short-term rental advocate said that short-term rentals improves the quality of life in East Lime. I disagree with that. I tend to agree more with the residents who said that short-term rental problem houses decreases the quality of life of residents. That's what I heard, so I'm not going to comment on the draft yet, but that's what I heard.
Okay. Anne, what did you hear? New, different, the same?
Well, it was the same but different. But what I heard tonight actually just reinforced my opinion I've had for a few weeks. You know, they have been successful here, and there seems to be a need for them, but I don't believe they belong in every neighborhood. I think the three beach communities with their own zoning, of course, can make up their own regulations. I think they belong in commercial and multi-use areas. I do not think they should be in residential areas. I think families and people that buy homes should be able to have the right to live in a neighborhood and not be worried about a motel being next door to them. I've had different people outside of here, especially with smaller kids, don't like the idea of different people they don't know, you know, coming in every few days like a revolving door. In the end, though, I think it affects the whole community. I think in the end, there should be some kind of referendum where the town can choose what it wants. You know, there's probably, what, close to 20,000 in East Lime, maybe 200 short-term rental owners. I really think the town people should get to speak up and vote on what they want.
Okay. All right. Yes, we're not yet on the editing, the final editing on item six, but my question about your reactions to what you heard tonight. Yeah, I feel as though some of it we've heard before. There were a few, a couple of folks we have actually heard from before, and so they pretty much re-articulated their previous points. I thought tonight, though, I did hear a little bit more, and I'd have to go through each, you know, each of my notes, but a little bit more of the quality of life issue that we have identified repeatedly. It's been here in town, identified in the literature that we've looked at, you know, concerning residential communities and the effect of short-term rentals on, you know, on residential communities. And actually, Mr. Garofalo's comments were particularly, struck me in a particular way, that I felt that he articulated those concerns very well, and, you know, made an interesting point that we actually made, but very briefly, in this, not the status report so much, but in this report, the draft report, that, you know, let's pursue as a town traditional lodging options, you know, is that, you know, that kind of commercial development. So I thought that was very interesting. I'm, I was glad to hear a few more voices than we have heard previously about their own, about residence experiences living next to a short-term rental, because especially in our first hearing, we heard more from owners of STRs, and then we started to get others coming in, including those living in neighborhoods with short-term rentals. So that was, that was helpful. I'm not sure anything I heard tonight alters my thinking about the approach that we, that the majority took on this committee. And just to clarify for anyone who will look at this tape later in the minutes, the process of coming to our conclusions, our recommendations, is outlined in section four of the report. The methodology that we use, that's very important, because we just didn't wake up one day and say, okay, now we decide what to do after we've heard everything. It was very methodical, and so, and the last, the last part of it was the survey that we all took, that Gary Frugia produced and wrote, to get us to have better dialogue and discussion and deliberation. So thanks again for that. So we obviously have different viewpoints, some very different 30,000-foot viewpoints, some it's more in the, more granular, like in the weeds a little bit, we differ, you know. I think Anne and I think alike, I think you and I think alike, but I've come to, come to a different, you know, different conclusions on the specifics. But I didn't, yeah, I didn't hear anything that would make me want to really alter the general approach, or change my vote in your survey, is I guess my point. So, so, but again, I'm just glad that we heard other voices that we hadn't heard from before. And of course, we all know that, and this is very important, that once we make our recommendations, and this goes to Board of Selectment, and it will go to zoning based upon our recommendations, that there will be a series of hearings there, depending on what's done. So the public opinion will keep coming, so that's very important. Okay, so I think with that, we can, you know, maybe get down to item six on the agenda, which is the kind of a, hopefully, a final editing of our, knowing what we have to do to finalize the report. Okay. Actually, I have just a couple of simple points about the editing. Obviously, when it goes to the Board of Selectment, it will no longer be a draft, so anytime you see the word "draft," "recommendation," or the first section, section one, will have to be altered and edited to reflect the fact that this is now the set of final recommendations, because the section one, as it's written, references the public hearing we just had and the process we're going through right now. So, easy enough. So, and I think another key edit would be concerning section five, and we can go through all of these, but section five, on section five, page four, paragraph three, this would be a good point to include more discussion about the option of a ban, partial or otherwise, which I think Gary has some concerns about, and we'll talk about that. Also, paragraph, page five, paragraph three, when we reference caps, we probably should add a little bit of information about how caps have been received. We had some initial information in the packet, I think, that you had given way back when, our first packet of information, and then since then, I mean, I know Palm Springs, for example, has struggled with it a bit. It's worked out okay, but then it's had a certain effect on the real estate market there. There was some litigation. I think Attorney Zamarka had outlined a little bit of that. So there may just be some references to that, to using caps as a methodology. But that's not the only methodology recommended in this report. Okay. I'm going to digress for a minute, but one thing I did strongly disagree with was in the public hearing, and I have to say it and get it out here so I don't forget, is it was attorney, last attorney who spoke.
Tristan.
Tristan, yes. Disagreed with his rendition of his understanding or whatever, his interpretation of the WIBI decision, and also that what we have presented here is somehow onerous. It's hardly onerous, you know, we've listed another, a number of different options in the regulatory scheme that I think is, is pretty streamlined and simplified. So I just wanted to get that somewhere out there. Okay. Yeah, so in terms of, those are a couple of basic, just a couple of basic other things, edits that I, like, that I would do myself, you know. So maybe we'll just kind of go down the pike here, and just, anyone that's got some edits that they would like to see, based on either what you heard tonight, or rereading the report, what you'd like to see emphasized?
I thought you did a really fine job of summarizing all of these opinions and all of these issues. We had talked about having a statement of purpose, and I noticed that you've got it here as a recommendation, that one get developed.
Right.
But I wonder if maybe our committee should also have a statement of purpose.
Okay, so in that preceding, so when, when we rewrote section 12 based on our last meeting, we also rewrote, I guess we rewrote section 11, and I took a stab at what you were just saying. So on page 13, so based on the majority recommendations, like those that are most popular amongst the eight of us, one through five would be the, would be a statement of purpose for zoning, and then one through three, in the next paragraph, would be a statement of purpose for an ordinance, if, if what is, what we have written is accepted. So that was my little stab at that. So I snuck in that, probably, I added that session, so it may not have been obvious right away, but, yeah, I think those are, and let me know if those, if you think those cover it.
Yeah, I think they cover it. I guess the question was, would the committee have a statement of purpose in its report to the board?
Oh, oh, okay. So sorry, I misunderstood you then. So in giving, okay, so let's go back and look at the first section, where the purpose of this report is set forth, and so, so does this not cover it for you? So second paragraph on page one of section, page one, section one, the second paragraph. First paragraph tells us what the status report did, then it brings you to this report, and what this report is trying to do. But it doesn't necessarily address those kind of goals that you are thinking about what we try to do. So with this, as, the section one has to be rewritten anyway, because now the public hearing has passed. So that would be a good place for maybe going back to our, remember, our set of goals therein here as an exhibit, and pulling those out and saying, this is what we try to adhere And it seems to me we weren't, we're not trying to find a happy medium, to find a happy medium. You know, if we happen to have taken a mid-course, it's not because that's what, that's what you do when you want to sort of split the difference or whatever, you know? It just seemed as though we landed there after much pulling and shoving, and some argumentation and deliberation. So if we land kind of in, kind of in a middle point, I think that's where we need to be, you know? Respecting still the other viewpoints, the still other viewpoints, and we heard them today. This is not an issue that could ever have one viewpoint. I mean, it's clear, it's as clear as the noses on our faces, right, I think? So, but we have sort of arrived at a kind of, we'll call it compromised position, and so, but I think the interesting thing is it's not intentional, it just happened that way. Paul?
So to Gary's point about the comment about the committee, it almost speaks to me on page 13 in the bottom, after, it says, indeed, if you pick that paragraph, where it kind of indicates that the committee tried to respect zoning, recommend that approach doesn't interfere with authority of the other three, it adheres to the Supreme Court, it's an important role for ordinance, and it's our hope East Lime finally adopts benefits, you know, the policy that East Lime finally adopts benefits the town as a whole and positively impacts a greater number of residents in the foreseeable future. If you end that there, that would almost be a statement of purchase.
I agree.
And then the draft recommendations are, you know, those are repeated from what was earlier, summarized there. So maybe you take that and label it a statement of purpose and put it up front, or label it as the last paragraph, is this is our statement of purpose.
I like that.
You want to modify something like that.
Okay.
I think it's important for us to convey that there are real rights issues here.
Yes.
And we are striving to protect and defend those rights, for residents to live their quiet life in peace in their neighborhood, and for property owners to have freedom to do with their property.
Yeah, I agree with you, and I think, so probably, we can kind of marry section, well, actually, it's the beginning of the paper and the end of the paper, right? So we can kind of emphasize what you would like to emphasize, which is the statement of purpose. So I would say section, sections one and 12 should kind of definitely have this discussion about purpose and approach. discussion about, um, purpose and approach. And, you know, respecting, um, rights, et cetera. Okay. Yeah. And that's good, because then, once a paper gets past five pages, you do need to reiterate things and repeat, because it get, it's got a lot of sight out of mind, right? Okay. Um.
But it also, I disagreed with, I forget who came up to speak, that it's, it read too lawyerly. I didn't think it read lawyerly at all. I thought it was a, a good narrative that hung together.
Okay.
Um, in plain language.
Okay. Yeah, I.
I agree with that.
That's good.
Totally.
I, I always try to, if I'm not writing a legal document, if I haven't been doing that, I mean, I try, I do try to write in plain speak. Yeah. Um, sometimes my sentences are too long, but other than that, I'm good with the, with the commas and the semicolons. Okay, thank you. Um, alrighty. Um, now Gary, you have some concerns, so let's get those discussed.
I had some concerns, yes. I, I forget what I said. However, so.
Get it out there.
My concerns, my concerns of the day are, you know, clearly, you always put a lot of work into these things. My view of the world is that the recommendations of the committee are all over the place. And therefore, the draft recommendation, though well-written and synthesizes everything, is all over the place. And it does not make for clear and concise reading by our intended audience, the Board of Selectmen. I had a different, just a structural view of how this should be done. And a structural view would, would, basically, it's that chart that I drafted. I would look at this as options to present to the, to the Board of Selectmen. These are the options that we have, that, that are, we are available. Then tell them which options are viable options, which are not, why they're viable, why they're not. So, I would have taken a different approach. Um, I'm, I'm looking at Board of Selectmen people reading this, and I think they may say the same thing to the other gentleman, oh, this is too lawyerly, I'm getting bogged down in it. Um, so, my view, because I'm visual, is to present it more in a simple way, and I think options does that. The option, there's an option of, we have no regulations, on one hand, no regulations, people can do whatever they want with these things, and on the other hand, we have a, a ban. And then, the other options, they go into various regulations, a ban with allowing, um, pre-existing non-conforming, uh, maybe something like Ann talked about, a ban in residential areas. But, but I think it needs to be conveyed in, in, in a, in a way that's a little more understandable to the board, and so that, again, I, I don't think it's our role, I don't think it's our role to tell them, this is what we think, even though I guess that's what we're supposed to do. I think the better method is, after doing all of this, present options, why some are good, why some are bad, and then, the Board of Selectmen understands the options, because they're going to have to make the decision. So, I would, that's how I would present. It's just, I think that way is more visual and easier to understand. That only changes a couple of sections in here. Um, I would start with that. I would start with that. Because attention, I'm not, nothing to, to say about the Board of Selectmen, but the attention of people, when people are busy, is to, you know, they're going to read the beginning.
So, two points.
Go ahead.
Um, one is that, um, our charge was to make recommendations, and not just a list of options, because, my God, we've had hundreds of options.
Correct.
I mean, you know, we've had, yeah, we've had general, like, five or six ways to go, and within each of those, you know, another 50 possibilities, okay? So, there I disagree with you, because I think our job was to research, analyze, and recommend. So, in recommending, you know, you mention options, you can discuss options, but at some point, we have to, as a Board of Aid, as a Committee of Aid, try to recommend. And that's where the various discussion, debate, um, argumentation, the, the, um, survey we took, and the survey was very helpful, because it made each of us commit to a particular position on a particular issue that we needed to figure out. So, that, I think, is summarized okay. Um, I agree with you on visuals. So, actually, I have as a point that I was independently going to make tonight, is this, when we present this, and we can include this as a, as a, we can include a visual with the report, is to, you can diagram our recommendations based upon the survey results, the majority, minor, minority, as Paul has pointed out. You can, you can diagram it, and you can, because at the end of the report, we talk about the structuring an entire policy, and that's what we've tried to do. We've tried to structure a policy. So, that lends itself to, to the visuals, uh, some of which you have done in your, um, you know, in your, uh.
Chart.
Your chart that you provided. That was at about our midpoint in figuring things out, right? When we started to figure out what our preferences were based on the research and public opinion, et cetera. So, um, that would be, that would be one way to, to address your concern, you know, but I, I want to be careful that we don't just, there was a point, a year, like, after July 20, whatever, when the Whibley came out, that we, we could have sat down, wrote the options, the pluses and minuses, and handed it in. But we've had to do more than that, and that's my point.
Yeah, I, I get that. However, my view of the world is, we need to take the Board of Selectmen through, through the process, so that they're not left with a million questions. Um, because they may question, well, they may come up with, well, what about this option? What about that option? So, my, my, my point is of options, and, and it's not just to throw out options to them.
Right.
It's to, it's to bring them through the thinking process, and what we did, these are the options. And these are viable options, and these are not viable options. But, and, and not to present that, I think, kind of, kind of, we need to give that information to the Board so that they realize, oh, that is a good idea, but it really doesn't work. Oh, Chikalo has an idea, he's an idiot, I don't like it, and we're not going to do it. But they need to see why we agree with options and disagree. And I, I would, I want to pull them into our process and, and make it clear to them so that, not that they're left with five or six options, but they're left with one good option, maybe in two options, and then, and then, we can make a recommendation, that's fine. But they need to be brought through the analysis, because if they're not brought through the ana- through the analysis that we've spent all this time on, then they're really not vested in it.
So, I think, yeah, so I think that analysis, actually, it can, you could expand it or add to it, detract, subtract from it, but I think that analysis does take place in section five, when we, we've had the survey, you know, I'm just going by the methodology that we, that we used, and the results of that, and how we got to a majority viewpoint about allowing them, but limiting their growth. And so, here is where I'm thinking, you could add, um, bottom of page four, um, where, look at the second paragraph, actually, under section five, it should be pointed out that no member favors inaction by the town. Uh, the committees discussed this approach from time to time, it never gained acceptance. Reasons stated of in the existence and growth of short-term rentals in, in town, despite the fact that our zoning regulations don't specifically define or allow them. And more recently, the Whibley, the ruling in Whibley, time restriction on rentals cannot be inferred. So, that discusses the no-action option.
It does.
Okay.
However, it, it makes it, it makes the reader work too much. We should not require the reader to expend so much energy to, to find, that's all I'm trying to say. Simply because I'm so visual.
Yeah.
Um, I would put, I would put each option, I would discuss each option individually, and then, they can go back and forth to the options. I wouldn't, I, I would move things around. That, that's all it is, is moving things, but they need to see options clearly, so they can refer to them later on, say, all right, this is option A, option B, and C, and D. Um, and the committee tells us, A, B, and C don't really work. That's all. That's my view of the world.
Can you add your chart and attach it to her prose? If you have most.
Who determines viability of the options?
I, I think, I think the viability would be our, the, the, the Committee's assessment of whether we think it's viable. Some of them may not be viable at all.
But, I mean, who determines that? We had a discussion on what everybody's thoughts were.
Mm-hmm.
Not whether they were viable. They, any option would work. If you want to put a ban, you could put a ban.
Yeah.
Carry a big stick around and have a ban. If you want to allow them, you allow them. I mean, all those options would work at some point if they're codified in statute, right, or law, so.
Well.
So, I don't understand the viability part of what you're saying. I, I get it, you want to be precise, you want to make sure a ban is included as an option, as a choice, and, and, and I think that's what's driving your, your choice of statement here tonight. But I think the Selectmen are smart enough to understand that very clearly, section five says, section four says, section six says, and they can make their mind up. That's really what we're supposed to be doing, not kind of laying it out for them on a silver platter. We're giving them a lot of choices here. And I think, I think we've done a pretty good job, even though we don't all agree on all these things. Um, you know, we're mindful of them, and they exist, so that's why they're in the report.
Fair enough.
I don't think that, I think this is extremely well-written, I clearly understand Gary's, you know, comments too, in the, um, but if, but if I'm sitting on the, you know, if I'm sitting in a town council, and, uh, you know, getting this, or Board of Selectmen, and the, and Tommy else, making stuff, towns I'm involved with there, so many hearings, but, in the, anyway, if I'm sitting here reading this, you know, I don't, it doesn't, as a committee, I think they were looking for something much more defined, saying, this committee says, we're going to do this, we're going to allow 30 days, we're going to allow a hundred percent, we're going to do this, we're not going to ban it, we're going to, you know, I think that's what they're looking for. This, Gary does make a good point. You read through this, and, you know, we're basically passing the ball to them to analyze what we did, and then, come up with, you know, their conclusions. We're not handing them something that says, you know, here's the ordinance partially written, or, or we should do this ordinance, A, B, and C, or we should, you know, do this, A, B, and C. You know, we're not, we're not really doing that. You know, we're just saying, you know, here it is, here's consensus, here's some, you know, ideas, but they're not defined ideas, your specifics, like, you know, um, you know, like, if I was agreeing with Ann, for example, for my view, isn't, nobody should, you know, we shouldn't have these in residential zones except for a minimum of seven days. I'm not saying we're agreed that, we obviously, as a committee, don't agree with that altogether, but that's just giving one example of a defined, a definition, that when these people pull up the conclusion, here's A, B, C, D, or the registration or permitting, that we feel that, okay, we definitely feel that, you know, you know, there should be a permitting, I do agree, for exa- just use that as an example. You know, you know, you know, as a group, that we feel that there should be, you know, hard and fast permitting procedure, and, you know, which, if we're going to go with Air B and Bs, I mean, if you don't have a permitting, you're never going to know who's doing them or not doing them. But the, the point of the matter is, I think that's what this, you know, our town fathers are looking for us to do, is not, you know, we just don't handle a bunch of research as extremely well-done as it is, you know, but I think they're going to be looking for, you know, a more, and I've had a discussion with, you know, one of our distinguished members, you know, at a social event, and, and, you know, you know, you know, there, I think they're looking for us to hand them something that says, you know, you know, and not have them have to, they're so busy doing so many other things, that they can't spend the time that we're, we're doing, doing this, to rehash it for months and months and months. That's the only, you know, and, and I know, my little, you know, little letter, I was trying to get to that point, A, B, C, D, but, you know, and that's just, you know, and I know that's not a consensus by anybody, nobody agrees with that, that's okay. But I think that's what, if I'm on this, the next level up, I believe that's what I'd be looking for from this commission, is something more definitive in nature, because I just don't think that they can spend the time with everything else they're doing to sit and have these discussions. If we can't come up with something definitive, how are they going to do it?
I think that the, the list in the last sections is very definitive, and so perhaps maybe we should move that to the front.
See, I think that leaves a lot of open, I think that last list is, just leaves a lot of open statements.
Well, the last, the, the six key recommendations, you know, are, come right from sections five and following.
Right.
And each of them specifies a specific recommendation, um, first being that we're going to, we, we recommend allowing short-term rentals and limiting their growth, and it walks you through how we got there. I wouldn't want to, if that's, if that's, I mean, we, we need to, we need to include how we got there, we can't just say.
Right. I think, I think to Gary's point of, and John reiterated Gary's point about definition of specific options, is only going to lead to more questions when the Board of Selectmen does, because you're talking about taking action against a short-term rental because of the length of stay in the zoning regulations. But the zoning regulations allow B and Bs in every residential zone, which are short-term rentals with food. So, you know, the law of unintended consequences is going to play in fact. You're talking about short-term rentals having inspections. What is the difference in safety between short-term rentals, academic rentals, and long-term rentals? So, that question is going to be had by minds different than ours.
Right.
So, I don't think that even though you can say, let's be specific about the viability of specific options that are written clearly, it's still going to open up unintended consequences based on how the regulations are already written. So, the conversation is going to happen, whether we say, here's one page, this is all you want, one page, there's six options, this is what we came down to. Forget about Ann's point about we need to carry him along on, on our thought process, which is mostly what this report is. Um, that would be the easy part to do it. But they're going to still have to figure it out, or guys like the gentleman sitting in the back row are going to have the opportunity to take us to court on these things. And we're going to have to eventually answer those questions, either through our town attorney, uh, or some other way. So, I don't think, in processing this, to create a recommendation, which was our charge, to create a statute, or to create regulation, or to simply ignore it, is a toss. We, you know, we give them, those options are all clearly on page 14 written out. I don't agree with all of them, but I'm willing to give it to the Board of Selectmen and say, yeah, okay, now your job is to create ordinances. Chairman of Zoning is going to bring that to the Zoning Commission, and their job is to decide whether they want to alter, change, adapt, rewrite the regulations as it regards to rental properties in Eastland. That's going to be the conversation they're going to have.
Well, in that one regard, just on that issue there, like, you know, amend our zoning regulations to define and regulate short-term rentals, including establishing permitting process, or whatever. You know, um, um, if I'm on the, you know, we obviously had some disagreements on that, but just giving that, you know, in there, I mean, I would think that the, um, you know, just like number three, adopt an ordinance, complement new short-term rentals, you know, what's that ordinance?
It isn't here, no, John. It is. It is, it isn't here. I mean, it literally is...
It's not, you know...
But if you look at section, let's go, let's take a minute.
I have, I have, I've read this thing twice, and I don't see...
Okay, let's look at section seven, page nine. It specifically addresses if we adopt an ordinance, that it's a complementary ordinance, and here's exactly what we recommend should go in it. Those three paragraphs. So, the recommendation is that what it establishes, a registration system, it's a database, it doesn't fight the zoning, what the registration information could include. I mean, it's very specific, so, I mean, just because they appear...
I don't disagree that nine, nine is very, is reasonably specific, but...
I mean, so what you're reading at the end there, just to be clear, you're reading the summary key recommendations. Each recommendation has a dedicated section. I mean, maybe I have to articulate that better, and it's...
No, it does. There's no question, there's no question on that.
Yeah.
If you're gonna, people are gonna go right to the end, they're gonna read those ending, and the, what does that mean?
So, that's a good place to just remind people that there's sections with the details of each of those recommendations. I think your point's taken.
Yeah, I just don't think it's clear, you know. Well, anyway, that's, in my opinion, it's off the reading.
Sorry, I jumped in there, but I did, I wanted to be clear that there is specificity.
That's it.
And there's per, per section, yeah, and per recommendation.
I don't think the recommendations, you know, are specific enough, then it's put that way. Okay, so the, you know, I think, I think they're gonna, I think the commission, they expect the us to end in something that says, here's something that we can vote on and adopt. Discuss, vote on, adopt. I don't think they're, they're looking...
I don't think they want to continue to have...
You think they wanna sit there and go through, and public hearings, and do all this again?
Having been in both seats, I, I think the opportunity to put their stamp on whoever is the administration leader, and whoever is the makeup of the board, are gonna put their stamp on policy.
Okay.
And they take this as a recommendation, it's clear as a recommendation. There'll be talk about bans, if, you know, if they wanna have talk about bans, whether it says it in this report or not, because that is clearly an option that we came across, and it's gonna be an option they can. They will have to hold public hearings in order to create an ordinance, that's part of the regulations, so they'll be all this, all that, yeah. Zoning may find themselves an opportunity, if they're doing text amendments, having to do public hearings. They may not, they may just be able to do it, and, but, you know, I think zoning's got more work on this than the Board of Selectmen does, to be honest with you, because I think there's a lot of things that need to be clarified, and we have permissive regulations...
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Good point.
I think the board's path is fairly clear-cut.
Yeah.
And, are we gonna do an ordinance, or, and if we do one, here's recommendations for how it should go? Do we like this? Do we wanna tweak this? And then, the bulk of the work of this is gonna wind up with the Zoning Commission.
Regardless of what the ordinance says from the Board of Selectmen, they're gonna have to deal with zoning and definitions, and permitted or not permitted, permitted with permit, permitted with special permit, I mean, whatever, whatever the decisions are on those things, they're gonna, and that's why I asked you about viable options, because it's gonna expand from here, no matter, no matter what we do. The conversation's gonna expand.
So...
Well, this is extremely well-done, so, I mean, so don't think my comments are negative, because they're not meant that way.
No, 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 I don't. Once it's written, it's a, it's a public document, I can take myself out of it, trust me.
My vote, Ann, would be not to edit this much, other than the conversation we had about the statement of purpose, taking that out and putting that in a separate spot, in the beginning or the end, and saying, this is what we tried to do. And I think those words are, we've written those words already, so I think we just...
Just kind of mirror it.
Take it, you know, that paragraph, and bring it into the end of the word future there on page fourteen, and, and then let them have at it, you know?
And then, to, to your concern, Gary, as well, on the issue of the ban, I mean, I did, I did...
No, no, my, my issue is, no, 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 no.
Should that be in, should that be as part of that process of how we got to allowing them, and, and wishing to limit their growth? Because we, we got the option of doing nothing, and I, we explained why that was not an option, especially in view of the WIBBY decision. That just was not, it was on the table for a while, and then once WIBBY came along, it became a non-option. So, should there be more discussion somewhere about bans?
My issue is not about bans. My issue is about...
Is process here?
My issue is about clarity.
Clarity, okay.
I, I do not feel, most of this thing is fine, okay? I don't think our process has been communicated in a clear way to the Board of Selectmen. I'm trying to make a clear record, period. And I want to see, I wanna see options, I'm, I'm gonna just continue to repeat this, and I will write something, and you guys can say, this is trash, or this is okay, but in my view, we, the roadmap of our thought process reaching our conclusions and recommendations, there's sections in there that have to be a little, they have to be much clearer, period. A lot of this stuff is very good, and we can use it. It's, I'm just talking about packaging, and shifting things around, but there's one main section that has to be changed. That's it, period. So, look, I write a lot, every day, and when I write documents, and I find that they're not clear, I throw them away, and I start over. So, I'm not adverse to changing my own work. So, that's why I'm making a recommendation that we need a clearer section on our process. And that section, section one is fine, section two is fine, section three is fine, section four is fine. I have an issue with section five. Section six is, is, and, and you know this stuff, you spent a lot more time than I did with all of this. I could never write all of these other sections. Section seven is good, section eight is good, nine, I mean, the whole thing is very good. Section five, I have an issue with, a big issue. So, I would, and I would start with that. I would not start with, I would not start with WIBBY, I wouldn't start with Public Act, methodology, I would start with five. That's where I would start with, and that's...
You'd start the paper with that?
I would start the paper with number five, period. They can read all the other stuff later. That's how I would start it. I mean, you need an introduction, clearly. You need an introduction, then you get into the options, and then you get into all this other stuff, and you, you, it's just repackaging, that's all.
Well, the problem with that is if, that I see, is that if you don't get it out there about what the WIBBY decision is, and the existence of Connecticut Public Act twenty-four, one forty-three, those are the two major developments. I think methodology should always precede any, any recommendation. I think it's good to state how you got to where you got.
Sure, I mean, that's...
So, I think that's gotta be ahead. But those two other sections, I think that you need them because, to precede everything else, because we're constantly referring to them. You know, WIBBY stands for X. So, when you go and discuss the other recommend, the recommendations, and you're referring to WIBBY, or you're referring to the possibility, possibility of relying on the state statute, uh, twenty-four, one forty-three, that you've already got the picture, that WIBBY decision came out, that's, that was a major deal, public, the, the new state statute came out, another pretty big deal. And it also explains, kind of right up front, why we're not relying on one versus the other, or whatever, so. If you wanna, if you wanna take a crack at rewriting section five to how we got to allowing short-term rentals and limiting their growth, that might be what you need to do. Because the purpose of this paper was to update, and, from the previous report, and recommend. But it's hard to talk about WIBBY, like, after the fact, if I'm, you know, because WIBBY is the reason why we're going through zoning, and, 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 we would recommend in, you know, that we define a short-term rental, and that we would otherwise regulate it. So, I think that stuff's gotta be up front. And it's not, I don't think it's particularly lengthy, so I think that has helped, and, and the public act, that's just what it is. Print section five in red. So, maybe if you'd like to, if you'd like to, you know, play with section five, I think that would be, if you wanna...
I'll, I'll dictate something and print it, and compare, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's all.
That's fine, I don't, yeah. And it might be that we can just get it, but I do think that, something I do wanna point out is that in the conclusion, the key recommendations are listed, and then I didn't know what to do with the related recommendations. So, for each of the six major recommendations, there's obviously, like, subcategories, right? There's little, little recommend, you know, so if we allow short-term rentals, limit their growth, that's like, there's like four ways of how to limit the growth. So, I didn't know how much I wanted to be repetitive, you know, in a conclusion. That's why I had that more summary sentence in there. Anyone have thoughts on that? Is it necessary to then...
I think that, that should stay as original section. I think, in the conclusion, you wanna beat that point, and if there are more questions, they go back to the original.
Yeah, to the sections and question. I think I'll just, for clarity's sake, keep referring to the section in which each recommendation appears. So, you know, section five is the first recommendation, so it's clear that they can go back, you know, and forth. Yeah, I didn't wanna get into, like, for example, the ordinance, we, you know, there's a lot suggested about what that ordinance would have in it, you know, based on the zoning approach we take. So, okay.
So, just, can I throw in a wrench?
You can go.
The state is considering, uh, three bills relating to short-term rentals in this session, or whether they go anywhere or not.
Okay.
One bill is Senate Bill nine sixty-six, an act requiring hotels and short-term rental operators to disclose the total cost of occupancy to consumers prior to purchase. If you wanna check these out, you go to cga.ct.gov and plug in the bill number, right? Then the other two are House bills. One is House Bill six four nine three. Let's catch up to it here. Six four nine three, an act requiring owners of short-term rentals to register in a statewide registry and pay a tax on units that are not owner-occupied. Register and pay a tax on, okay, so that's pretty, and the other one is House Bill five four one six, which, which is an act concerning the regulation and taxation of short-term rental properties, and the dedication of a portion of the room occupancy tax from such rentals.
So, so that's kind of a repeat of...
Repeat?
Of, of last year's.
Yeah.
There was a, a similar bill to try to share it with the municipalities, is that what it's trying to do? Yeah, we don't know exactly.
This says to establish registry, a short-term rental rentals registry and registration fee, specify safety standards for such rentals and liability insurance requirements for the owners, dedicate a fifty, dedicate fifty percent of the room occupant tax received by the state from such rentals to propose bill, blah, 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 to municipalities, and twenty-five percent of such revenue to the tourism fund.
So, sharing.
And authorize municipalities to impose a supplemental room occupancy tax. So, that would, that would allow the, the towns to be able to do that, add a tax, so.
Yeah.
But just for the record, those are being considered.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's something we could, we, we had to do that last time in the last report. This one did reference the three bills, obviously one became law, and like, two other bills, yes, we, we put that in there, that, right, that when we discussed in section three, we discussed the other bills that were introduced but didn't become law. So, one of them looks like it's resurrecting itself, yeah. So, we could reference those, that would be another edit that could go in there.
Well, since you've been up in Hartford, what a chance, if any, those really been addressed seriously.
Sometimes when you have a constituent that asks you to consider a thought into a bill, those get a public hearing, and they don't go much farther, or they're incorporated into another bill. I think the two SB, I mean, the five fourteen and sixty-four ninety-three in the House may find themselves, if it gets legs into one document, and, and have that, but the issue is gonna be sharing the tax. People don't like to share taxes over there, so...
So, that one, Paul, was five four one six, House Bill five four one six was the...
The registration and taxation.
And fees, and then sharing that.
Yeah.
Playing, playing nice, but...
The Senate bill, I'm not sure is gonna, gonna go far, but, you know, I don't know what the, you know, it's a different mindset up there with them, I wasn't there, but... Sometimes, they all have to have a public hearing in order to move forward, and I don't know whether they've had a public hearing. That process is gonna continue until the end of March.
That's right, it'll take a while.
And then, once the JF deadline hits, then, if they haven't had a public hearing, then they die in the line, kind of.
Right, you know, otherwise, if they get out of committee, and that...
Yeah, doesn't mean they can't be inserted in a bill somewhere, or in the final document the budget has, but...
Okay, your point.
These are, these are finance options and tax options, and in a year where a lot of the money's been taken away from, you know, the government, they're finding themselves with a shortage of money, so more taxes on these types of things would become attractive with some people up there.
Okay.
But I think if we're, if we're gonna rewrite section five to a certain point, then we're probably talking about another meeting, right? And we should have another meeting to go over this, or you wanna try to do that now?
I, I guess, I mean, that would, okay, yes, so, so, Agenda Item Seven is a timeline to reach that final report, trying to schedule a presentation to the Board of Selectmen. I was thinking the nineteenth of March, as of, I haven't asked for this yet, but they are done with, they're almost done with their budget reviews, and by the middle of March, everything goes over to Board of Finance, and it looks like that March nineteenth date might be a date for them, or maybe they pick another time, you know? But we'll need to, if we're gonna try a, you know, if Gary's gonna try a rewrite of section five, then we'll need to establish some sort of a timeline for us, correct?
Right.
I'm free next week.
Uh, let's take a look. Okay, uh, let's see. So, that would be the third, next week's the third of March.
Yeah, maybe the fourth, I think, third's fine.
Monday is the third. Um, I don't know what's available here, but, what, so, the first question to Gary, how much time do you need to...
You, you can send this to me in, in editable version of something, email?
Uh, I can send you a word...
Perfect.
Okay. Okay.
When does the Board of Selectmen need? Every Wednesday, or every month, every, twice a month?
They meet twice a month. Um, I, and I think, from what I can, my, looking at the various meetings of Board of Finance and so forth, it looks like they're, they'll, they'll be done on the nineteenth of March, at that, at that meeting. And they may say, come in the first of April, something, I don't know. But that is something I will request, I wa, I was hoping to request, that that would be a time. But that is something I will request, I was hoping to request, that that would be a time.
So, are they meeting April 2nd?
Presumably, I don't know that for sure.
They'll make the first and fifth Wednesday.
First and third, yeah.
First and third, how much?
First and third, yeah. So that would be...
The second.
April 2nd, but Wednesday.
That might be a more realistic target, I would think. Especially if they're gonna be in the final throes of budgeting.
Yeah, although, yeah, I think what happens is, like, they will be done with it, and then when they meet on the 19th, there's, I don't believe there's any budget review as part of that. Like, they're, they will have sent the budget to the Board of Finance. I, you know, 'cause I think the Board of Finance is starting their, if you look at the town calendar, the Board of Finance is starting their reviews, um, by the middle of the month.
Which month?
Uh, the middle of month of March. So that means that that, I don't know what that delivery date is by Board of Selectmen, but, I mean, Brooke, you can check perhaps, but looking at the month of March, Board of Finance is starting its special meetings, I think around the 14th or something.
So, um, if you could email me a copy of this, what is today, the 20th, 26th, 7th, 8th? Let's see. I can have something to you by the 4th.
The 4th of March.
By the 4th of March.
Okay.
So do we wanna have a short meeting on the 4th of March to kinda discuss your option?
You guys know this better than me. Can you just email it to everyone and, to comments, like, up, down, you can't do that.
I don't know that that would be quite meaningful, why?
Yeah, something that makes the...
Okay, okay, fair enough.
These newspaper guys who go after you hard.
Right.
Not as hard as they used to. No better than that.
That's the truth.
Um...
Edit short term, okay, fair enough.
We could have a Zoom meeting, I mean, you could do that. Just have to open up the...
Yeah, right, right.
Okay. What about the 10th?
The 10th, um, meeting, I mean, us meeting on the 10th?
Oh, I'm just having to throw it out there. Right, that's fine.
That's fine, but you giving us, you giving us your rendition...
On the 4th.
Of section five on the 4th, okay.
What, what is the 10th?
Monday.
It's Monday.
No, I know, but what is, what is the purpose of that?
Uh, that would be to, for us to discuss section five.
Not the 4th.
Correct, the 4th, um, Gary would give, would circulate by then the revised section five.
I see.
And then we would, um...
I got you.
Meet on the 10th.
We probably have to vote to send this along, don't we?
Yeah, yes, we do.
So the 10th would be that vote?
Um, we would have, yes, if, if we agree on changes. We could discuss any changes. You have to make a hard, hard and fast decisions about changes, and then you could say, "Okay, given those changes, uh, we'll send this." But it, it obviously has to be rewritten, like, somehow revised, you know, on Word doc or whatever, right? But you wanna allow them to do reading. So let's say, let's say we, you know, the April 2nd is their, the date that they, um, can, can hear us, you know? You have to give them at least a little sign, but that seems like enough time. Couple of weeks to read the report, right? That's what we did last time with the status report, we gave them a couple of weeks.
So we meet on the 10th, put this thing to rest with a vote?
Mm-hmm.
And then we present to the board on the 2nd?
I think that, that would be the most logical thing. And then I, I would, I'd have to make that request. And I'll, tomorrow, I was hoping to just make a request to the Board of Selectmen, asking Dan, whatever, um, with the upcoming meetings, what is that looking like? You know, would you, I gotta throw some dates out there. I'll still throw the 19th out there of March, right? Because, although that doesn't give them as much time to read the report, but...
I think you should, I think you should give them a little time to read, to read this next, a wonderful report that this committee's put together primarily yourselves. So what are we gonna do at a presentation? Who, who wants to, what's, what's gonna happen?
So, I, I don't know, I was hoping everyone would speak up about some aspect of the, you know, sort of a joint presentation, and I'm serious about doing a diagram, because I think, I think this lends itself to a little diagram of some kind and how artistic we can be.
PowerPoint?
Yeah, well, not so much a PowerPoint. Um, yeah, maybe it has to be that, but, um, uh, but definitely just some sort of schematic thing. You know, that just sort of helps, uh...
Because a presentation is gonna, you know, people need to take, it's gonna take time to prepare a presentation, and we're not just gonna go up there and read the article to them.
No.
So it takes time to do a presentation, um...
So the April date is more sensible.
Right, and the 19th, I think is a little short.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if people wanna volunteer, if we wanna assign things, people have to be comfortable, whatever.
Yeah, I'm happy to give the minority dissenting a point, I don't care for that, you know? It's what you always did.
Okay, all right, so...
Why don't you bring some drinks, okay?
We'll do that too.
But to your concern about the presentation and marketing, that's where that might be able to come in. We could hand them this report, but then we could do a PowerPoint or something that's more visual to present the summary of the report.
Yeah, they're not gonna decide on it, so they can take in whatever information they want.
I think that sounds like a plan. Madam Chair, I suggest that we, I move, we adjourn.
Yeah, just one, so, who would be the, who would be the creator of the PowerPoint? Would be my question.
Just as a point, I, I will not be available either, either April 2nd or the 19th, so...
Okay.
Or the, 'cause you've got, the 19th or the April 2nd, I'm out of town on both of those.
When I make the request for April now, I'm gonna have to throw out a couple, you know? I'll just say, if that's okay, and then if that's okay, I may get, I may, thank you. I may get that next date, it may come back to me. You know, the, the third Wednesday of April as opposed to the first.
Yeah, I'm just, don't worry about me, I'm just saying, I just wanna put it out there. And what is Paul's, Paul, you talked about, how does that work? If somebody did have a dissent to the report, how does that work? Like, if, I, would that, were you facetious about that, or was that a serious...
It depends the crowd you're talking to, you know? If I, if I went up to the Senate right now on a dissenting report, I'd be clearly and quickly overlooked most of the time, but, no, I was really only kidding, you know?
No, I, I just, I'm just looking at my question.
I'm happy to help with, you know, the presentation, if you wanna take stages, if you wanna do it all.
No, no, I mean, I think it's, definitely should be a shared event. And I also think that where it was critical, we should have some articulation of minority viewpoints. So for example, in the, the overarching recommendation about allowing short-term rentals and, um, and limiting their growth, I mean, it's good, you, that's a good place for majority-minority. You know, not with some of the minutia, but that particularly.
I don't even know we have to.
Yeah.
With all due respect, we can just, Gary's work was excellent, I think. In the survey, you could make that into a condensed one or two PowerPoint slides and say, you know, "Here are some thoughts on one side, here are some thoughts on the other, this is how it kinda played out on this issue, on that issue, on the next issue." You know, I, I don't think we have...
You don't have to get too in the weeds.
I don't think we have to get too crazy.
Yeah, so, but if we do do a PowerPoint, um, you know, we'll definitely have one or two people work on that and, um, if you think it's necessary, you know?
I don't know if it's necessary, I know, I could probably get someone to help me put PowerPoint together.
Yeah, no, it's, it's okay, I just, yeah.
At least for consideration.
Okay, all righty.
And it wouldn't say dissenting on that.
All right, so, so we're okay with some dates here?
Here's the majority view and here's the correction.
So, um, so with...
Threaten my butt.
So Brooke, on the 10th of March, is this room available?
I'm not seeing anything on the calendar.
Oh, so let's book us. Book this committee.
So what are the action items for the 10th? He's, Gary's gonna do his edits and send that out, or does anybody else have edits?
And then...
We pretty much don't, right?
Yeah, right, I think, I mean, the couple of things you mentioned tonight will be incorporated, and then, um, I can do those ahead. Okay, 'cause I can do that. The couple of things you mentioned tonight, I can do ahead. Like, the suggestions about the purpose, stating the purpose, you know? But we also have to make sure that whatever we agree upon in section five, if this other info, that it, it's somehow consistent with everything else. You just don't want it sticking out there.
You have one?
I have, I have it online.
Okay.
I can.
I just have, you want this?
I can go, I'm pretty good.
The only thing I'd like to say is very interesting, you know, how, you know, listening to two years or a year and a half of this and some extremely good comments from people.
Yeah, yes.
And, and viewpoints, and then also from, you know, the seven of us.
Yes.
That, you know, the, I mean, it's not, this is a very complicated issue, and it just shows that, just, you know, the difference of opinions, just in our small group. And, and, and to say that, you know, in the bigger picture, where Paul's been up in, you know, in our state legislature and Senate and stuff, and, you know, and this is not, I don't see this as a political issue. So we look at seven views that are sitting here, I don't see this political, Republican, Democrat at all. And so I am, I am really impressed with the viewpoints of each of the individuals that we have here, if they're listening to them, and, and it really is quite fascinating, actually. And, um...
You should be on a jury one day.
Foreman.
Paul would be there.
I'd be the judge.
Just waiting? Okay, perfect, okay, so I'll take a motion to...
So the one question we need to, we need to ask our attorney about that association, I talked to W. Harris.
Yes.
If Pine Grove says 30 days is the minimum rental, which is what they do, they don't allow it anymore, how enforceable is that?
So that...
If they're in association.
So that's, that's section in the paper, which I spoke about previously, put it in this paper, that we need, um, a detailed legal opinion.
Or we need to tell the Selectmen.
Yes, that, exactly, you need to, that's what we did, that's what, that's exactly what we said there.
You don't have to.
Because we, we got a very short answer when we asked that question, but then, the reason why I suspected there's more to it is, you know, I've heard about the deeds, this and that, and there are those, there are five beach communities that do not have their own zoning, and two of the five are in the camp of, "We would rather have 30 days or more." Three of them are the other way, so that, and that's mentioned in the report. So, um, definitely a question that has to be answered, you know?
Interesting, interesting legal question, one more legal question. If you look at, just using Black Point as an example, that we're technically a municipality. So there's the town ordinance trump Black Point's ordinance. If Black Point was to install an ordinance, the Trump, if the town has an ordinance and we're gonna install an ordinance, which one trumps it? Good question.
Right, but you have, you've got your own zoning, so I think...
We have our own zoning, but, but remember, zoning and, and, and ordinances are different. Zoning, your grandfather did ordinances, you're not.
The quasi-municipality, the beach associations are a product of the legislature. They had to be written by the associations and then approved by the legislature. So there would be some restrictions on how that works.
Yeah.
And it might be in the document of...
Right, in the actual articles of incorporation. But sometimes there's very grandiose language in those. I recall Crescent Beach, and I recall, um, Greg, yours as well. There's, you know, kinda generalized language, so you really need to do some kinda legal analysis on those. That's why I reiterated that point, it's a whole separate section, and it's something that has to be answered, so that we know the reach of our own zoning once we change our zoning, you know?
Yeah, 'cause it's interesting.
Sorry to add extra minutes.
No, that's okay.
Because zoning goes...
Move we adjourn. Gary, move we adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I thought we were done.
Second?
Second. Paul, Paul made the motion.
All righty.
Thank you.
So let me...